This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. How are my favorite city commissioners and city council liaisons this evening?
Good, doing good. How are you?
Well, thank you.
Well, it looks like we have a quorum, but barely. We got Tom, Gary, and Alan.
Charles, are you on the phone? Well, it's seven o'clock. And it's September the 10th, and this is the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The City of Lago Vista, I say regular, it's a teleconference. Maybe there's some day where we'll be all back bonding together. No more social distancing, distancing. Let's see, commission members, we have Tom Monahan and I don't, I don't see where Charles is actually logged in. We have Richard Brown, Larry Hagler. Let's see, what do we have then? We're missing Paul Prince. I know that Andy is not going to be able to make it this evening. Are you, are you out there with us, Roy?
Yes, sir. I'm here, in spirit.
You're in the spirits?
Yes, sir.
Oh, good, I wish I was. Say, Roy, did you hear from anyone other than Andy as far as?
No, sir. Mr. Solomon usually calls if he's not going to make it.
Yeah, maybe somebody can call him and remind him if they happen to have that number handy.
Somewhere, but I think it's the same line that he's going to be logging into.
Well, he's never, he's never on camera. He's usually on the phone, I believe.
That's it. And I'm afraid it's a landline, I think. It's either a landline or it's the only line. I'm not sure which.
Well, anyway, well, if somebody will do that, but in the meantime, welcome to Roy Jamboor, our Director of Development and our city attorney, Aaron Silbera. Looking fine there tonight, Aaron. Always good to see you. And we'll go ahead and start with our citizen comments for non-agenda items. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the commission is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions. Any item that is not on the agenda. So at this point, are there any citizen comments? Oh, Mr. Roberts, go right ahead. I see you raising your hand.
Thank you, Chairman Zaleski. We spoke, I spoke briefly to this at the last meeting. And I would just like to keep it in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission that if at all possible, I think it would be a great benefit to the city if these meetings were uploaded to YouTube such as the council meetings are. And when we go back to a live forum in person, that those could be recorded and uploaded to YouTube as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, sir.
Any other citizen comments? If not, then we will move along to the first item on tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Brown?
Thank you. I have a question about Mr. Roberts' comment. I guess that he's saying that the technology is in place in that he said that the council meetings are on YouTube. Oh, and Mr. Prince just joined us. That's nice. We have more than four now. But my question is, do we want to put that on an agenda for discussion in an upcoming meeting?
I think, Mr. Brown, what you might want to do at the end of tonight's meeting, when we get to future agenda items, you might want to suggest that.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to start with item number one. And item number 120-1662-SP-E is consideration of a special exception application pursuant to section 11.60 chapter 14 to allow an increase in the maximum height allowed by table A of chapter 14 from 15 feet to 23.75 feet for a loft addition to an existing family, single-family residence at 2800 Declaration Circle, Highland Lakes Estates, section 8, lot 8132. And reach and grab my papers. If you would, Roy, give us the staff presentation.
I certainly will. And just so you'll know, the reason I muted myself a second ago is because this applicant called me on the phone and was having trouble locating the agenda and figuring out how to log on. I told him to give it a shot, but that at the very least, I would explain that he had no intentions of being rude. He just couldn't figure it out. But anyway, for what it's worth, the thing that, in looking at the views, there was one neighbor that was impacted, and it was their side yard. As far as I can tell, everybody else's views were in a completely different direction. We got a couple of comments from neighbors. One commended the applicant about how much better he was taking care of the yard than the previous owners. The other one was complaining they ought to keep cleaning it up before he applied for this. I'm not so sure either one of those is really relevant to the height issue. But, you know, those are their comments, be that as they may regardless. But what is important is that the one neighbor that was impacted did not respond, you know? And it did not seem like anybody else's views were in the direction of this increase, if you will.
Roy, I've got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I would agree that doesn't impact the views, but I guess when I went out to the property, the first thing that struck me was the structure doesn't fit the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Pretty well developed and seems to be out of context with the rest of the housing here.
Yes, sir. I would not disagree with that. That is typically something I leave to you guys, you know, since it, you know, exactly what that means can, can be, you know, I could write several pages on that, you know, in general, without even talking about this specific property. But, you know, I think at the end of the, at the end of the day, the appropriate question is you guys and what you feel about, you know, that, that structure at that location.
Just a comment, Roy, it felt like this write-up was a little bit different style write-up. Your kind of assessment of the situation may be more in line with what we discussed. I actually found it helpful, so.
That is later on your agenda to discuss these new staff reports? You know, having done one for the city council, I mean, these are the ones I'm used to doing. When I arrived here, some people that are no longer involved gave me specific instructions about what they wanted to see on staff reports. So, you know, being the cooperative guy I was, I said, you know, okay, that's fine with me. You know, they, they didn't want anything of any length. They didn't want to hear about all the details. They wanted just to hear what was important. But they also didn't want to be led down a path, was one of the other instructions I was given. Anyway, this is more what I consider to be in-depth. It covers far more topics, perhaps more concise on every topic than it was before. Because what I did before, based on, on the limitations, was pick the important ones and then make sure you understood those. I guess I cover a lot more ground, but hopefully at least briefly. But I'll be, it had, I had mixed feelings about it. It did cause some confusion, you know, the ones before. You know, it was like people were reading a bunch of parts and all of a sudden didn't know what, what the important things were. So you lost that, but, and, and some people clearly didn't read them all, you know? So that there was that issue, you know, it was lengthier.
I like the new format for one.
I, I think, I think that as a whole, the council did, but I'll let David address that. He, he had private discussions. They didn't tell me what they thought about it.
If we're ready, we'll try to stay on topic. If you'd like to make some further comments about the format, we can do that a little bit later, I think we would have.
Like I said, it's on the agenda to discuss it, I think.
I have a question about the vacant lot. You mentioned that a building had been built on it at some point, which is no longer there. This, should we assume from that comment that the lots are consolidated?
No, they are not consolidated, and that's, if it's there, it's illegal. I don't, I don't know how it got there, whether somebody went to sleep or what, or whether that was once upon a time allowed. But I think it might be on the old survey, but I, I couldn't, I couldn't find it, but, you know, I didn't trespass either, so.
We're talking about the vacant lot adjacent to this particular case?
Yes, sir. He owns that property as well.
Correct.
That is, it is not one lot.
Sir? This is David Prather. I'm sorry I was delayed to get on. Are you talking about my case?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Is there, I'm hearing conversation, I'm sorry, I didn't know it was my item. I'm hearing conversation about our vacant lot next to the lot our house is on. And is there, there's some reference to a building having been there before?
Roy?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. I forgot I was muted. Yeah, I think there was definitely a building there before, and it might even be on the survey. Right. I don't, I didn't think it was either. But I didn't, I didn't trespass either, so it wasn't there and I didn't see it. But no, it wasn't on this survey, but I think I found an old permit or something for it. And can't explain why it was permitted.
Okay, but you specifically mentioned that it was built in 2012.
Right, that must be where I found it. I searched the permit records when it's new enough. And of course, there is an accessory building that is there that is non-conforming, that's on this lot. It's non-conforming because it's in the rear yard setback.
All right. With that said, are there other questions that might have of the staff at this point?
This is Dave Prather. I'll just say, we purchased the property two years ago, and I have a recollection of seeing the previous owner's building permit for that little shed that's in the back in, you know, looking at her own survey, that it is constructed in that rear setback area.
And they may not have, they may not have had the same approval process we have now. And, you know, there, it's a non-conforming. As long as he doesn't want to add on to it, it's fine.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Let's, let's try to move along with the actual applicant or application for this property. And if there are no further questions of the staff, Mr. Prather, you can make your presentation.
Okay. Yes, we're just looking to add a second floor with approximately 17 by 20 foot. So it's, it's a fraction of the overall footprint of the building, which is approximately 50 by 50 feet. We know that we have to, to be able to do this, we have to exceed the permitted height by approximately eight foot six. So, you know, step one for us is just to see if this is even something that we can, can be granted. So the, there is an interior space immediately, you know, on that first level, about 13 feet above the current finished floor level. And then access to the roof above that, but the, the top, that eight foot six represents the height of the railing on that top level.
All right. Any of the commission members have questions for Mr. Prather, the applicant?
Mr. Prather, I may have gotten a little lost when you were talking about the height of the addition. Did you just say that the height of the handrail is the height that you requested at 23 feet, eight or nine inches? Or the, or the ridge, or the ridge of the gable?
Yes. Yeah, the, the guard rail, the railing would be three foot, you know, 42 inches above that surface, which brings it about six inches above the ridge of that gable pyramid.
It is marginally higher than the ridge.
Yeah, it's a matter of inches, correct.
Any other questions to the applicant?
It's a quick question. When I, when I went out and looked at the site, it looked like, you know, I saw the height pole on top of the roof. That was pretty clear. There seemed to be some kind of a frame that maybe you put in place to hold the ridge pole. Does that, does that frame have anything to do with the size of what's going up there, or is it?
No, you're, you're correct. That's part of my being able to, to show about where it is. The, the actual, I think the width of that and the frontage is like six feet. So what I'm proposing would be, you know, another 10 feet or so wider than that.
Any other questions of the applicant? If not, then we will go ahead and open the public hearing on this item at 7:19 PM. And any one within the public of this commission meeting like to make any comments? No comments, so we will close this at 7:20 PM. And we will open up for, yes?
I'm recommending that we keep this item open. We had an issue with the publication of the notice, and we want to allow for that to complete itself. So if we could leave it, leave the item open. I believe that's what the recommendation was.
That's, that's the next item. It's the item following this, not this one.
Oh, yes, sorry. My, thank you for the correction, Roy. Sorry, Chair.
All right. That's all right. So we've closed the publicating meeting at 7:20, and we will open it up for discussion.
I want to tag on to what Tom was saying earlier. When I, even before I went out there, I had concerns. Mike has kind of inconsistency with the architecture of the neighborhood. And I guess just the way things are laid out and the neighboring houses, it didn't, it didn't strike me as being as much of a problem as I had expected it to be. But I don't know, I'm interested in, and maybe you can comment some more on that, Tom, or other commissioners as well.
I, you know, I know it doesn't cover the whole footprint of the house, but it just seems like an odd-looking structure that, in an established neighborhood where no one else has two-story houses or anything. And so, to me, I, the, well, I don't think it is really any view obstruction issue. It just seems the architecturally, it just doesn't seem to fit the neighborhood. And it just, and while one, there was one person commented that they didn't want to see the height extension, not for the reason we could consider, which would be the, the POA requirement, but, but he still objected to the height, inheriting that, even though they cited a reason that we can't consider. And I guess I'm having a hard time accepting this one, I guess.
I guess, I was going to ask a question of the applicant. Is the idea of this structure to gain a view of possibly the lake or the hill country?
Yes. Yes, that's, that's a primary reason.
Okay. The only, the only comment I would make along with the same that Tom might have mentioned. I just, I just have a bit of an issue with a widow's walk on that particular neighborhood. I don't really have an issue with the second story. If there were windows in the second story, as there appear to be, perhaps that would be a significant view. But I'm just not too keen on the idea of the widow's walk that's associated with it. And I think, Richard, you needed, you wanted to say something.
Yes, please. I would like to add to your comments about its continuity with the neighborhood. And I certainly agree that those comments are relevant relative to Declaration Circle. However, this house also abuts Highland Lakes Drive. And Highland Lakes Drive architecture is much more eclectic, many multi-story, and many modern designs. And in that regard, I guess if you're driving down Highland Lakes Drive, you, that, that observation would not be as apparent to you as, well, while driving on Declaration Circle. And I also don't find that architectural feeling, architectural feature to be as compelling as some of my colleagues.
This is Dave Prather, and I appreciate that perspective.
This is Dave Preather, and I appreciate that perspective and, of course, agree that there are multi-story homes on Highland Lake Drive. Also, some of the houses across the street from us, you know, from the street are only a single level, but, you know, from the golf course, several of them have a lower level. So would be regarded as two-story structures. Also, some of the newer houses just on Douglas Court, you know, less than a hundred yards from us, the newer homes are two-story. As far as the architecture and the upper level, the ridges, you know, I've, I propose, I'm an architect, by the way, registered in Ohio, not in Texas, but I have tried to, and honestly, there's not a lot of snazzy elements to our existing home. But I've tried to optimize, you know, the gables gestures such as they are and feature those in really parapet elements that minimize really the appearance of any railing. I want the railing to be as minimal as possible. But certainly appreciate the perspective. You know, you don't want a lot of these railings and widow walks and houses around here, but my attempt to, you know, to work with the existing architecture of the home with these parapets and offer a degree of privacy to that level, so, but thank you for that comment.
Any other further discussion? Larry, you are signaling, I suppose.
Yes, when I was walking that property yesterday, excuse me, between showers.
Turn off the light.
I first thought about the difference in the ceiling or the addition to the roof. And, you know, you look next door and it looks like basically they have two driveways on the lot, and that's different than the house next door to it. So I'm, I'm kind of saying to myself that it's different, but a lot of them are different for different reasons. So I don't see it intrusive to anybody else.
Thank you, Larry. Any further discussion on this particular case?
Well, I, back to the, sorry, Gary, this is Paul. Back to the consistency, I was thinking of it as you come kind of from the, I guess, what is that, northwest, coming down the hill on Highland Lakes. The house back, the houses up the hill from this are all pretty consistent, one stories. I understand the point, though, if you keep going down Highland Lakes past this house kind of on, you know, into the, further down the hill, there's a lot of eclectic stuff going on there. And so this may be kind of the border between things that are all very typical and things that are all very atypical. Because from that perspective, I'm inclined to be a little more accepting.
Any other discussion at this point? Would someone like to make a motion? I'll go ahead and make the motion if I see anybody jumping in. Regarding item number two zero dash one six six two dash SPE dash E, that the Planning and Zoning Commission of Lago Vista offer a, issue a special exception application pursuant to section one one six zero of chapter fourteen to allow an increase in the maximum height allowed by table A of chapter fourteen from fifteen feet to twenty-three point seven five feet for a loft addition to an existing single-family residence at twenty-eight hundred Declaration Circle, Highland Lakes Estates, section eight, lot eight one three two. Is there a second? I'll second her. I was seconded by Richard Brown. Any further discussion on this item? I don't see any further discussion. If you would, all those in favor, raise your right hand. We have four for the affirmative, and those opposed, one. So the motion carries those voting in the affirmative, Zaleski, Brown, Hagler, and Prince, and one in the negative, and that was Tom Monahan. All right. Moving on, I'm going to read the one section on the agenda that the following item, this refers to item number two, the following item requires a public hearing as noticed and advertised. However, the initial notification boundary prepared by the GIS department was based on municipal address in lieu of the legal description that incorporated additional property pursuant to an amended plat. As such, the staff requests the commission continue the public hearing and defer consideration of the application until next scheduled meeting. This will allow the GIS department to correct the notification boundary and the staff to improve, to provide written notices to the corrected list of property owners who should receive them. So item number two is two zero dash one six five eight dash CO dash U, consideration of a recommendation regarding a conditional use permit application pursuant to chapter seventeen of chapter fourteen of the Lago Vista Code of Ordinances to allow an accessory building that exceeds the maximum size and height at two one seven one zero, Surrey Lane, Marquette Ranches, plat eight, lot eight zero four nine A. And Roy, if you would, your comments regarding item two?
Just so you understand, we did get the map corrected and the correct one is now in your packet, but you'll see that that represents the new map and that address represents three lots. Our GIS department, they had a, a change in personnel in the public works component and the gentleman that was doing our maps for us was busy trying to help them get caught up and he just wasn't thinking and managed to do a notification boundary. And as you can imagine, when the legal address moves to the northeast like that, there's some people that didn't get mailed notices that would have. So we asked the gentleman, the applicant's indulgence, and apologized to them, and we advertised again today, as a matter of fact, and it will appear on your next agenda, and a few more people will get letters in the mail.
Thank you, Roy. Did any, anyone have any comments to the staff at this point?
Yes, please.
Yes, Linda.
Thank you, thank you. Roy, would you please ask that a second sign on the sagebrush side of this property be placed to clearly identify that site?
They, I will, I will, they will go back and check everything because it'll be on their list for this month, and I'll send them an email, ask them to do that.
Okay, I was pretty sure I found it just based on the aerial that you provided.
Yeah, and I'll be honest with you, with our new ordinance, I think it's required to have one on that side somewhere.
Well, I would think that people who drive that street should be informed.
Right, but when they placed the sign originally, they were going by the incorrect map that only showed Surrey Lane, only one lot. You follow me? Get corrected till well after they place the sign.
Thank you.
You bet. Hopefully they'll get it right without me telling them, but I'll tell them nonetheless.
Nobody but planning and zoning members have driven on sagebrush in the last two years, so much going on on that street.
Any other questions of the staff? So what we will do at this point is we'll actually open the public hearing at seven thirty-five. And are there any public comments? If there's no public comments, we're going to continue the public hearing until our next meeting. Correct, counselor? Very good, thank you. If we could, we'll move on to item number three. And item number three on our agenda is two zero dash one six seven one dash CO dash U, consideration of a recommendation regarding a conditional use permit application pursuant to section seventeen of chapter fourteen of Lago Vista Code of Ordinances to allow for a carport that exceeds eighteen feet in height that is within the required minimum sideyard setback of two one six four three, High Drive, Country Club Estates, section eight, lot one five seven zero. And Roy, before you start on the presentation, perhaps it was just, maybe I didn't quite understand, it says that it is within the required minimum side when in fact it is not within the required minimum sideyard setback. Is that correct?
Well, it's, it's a term of art, and I perhaps used it in a way that's less clear than it should have been. He is required to stay ten feet away from that property line, and he did not do that. And as a result, that is one of the three things that is actually in front of you. Approving that encroachment, if you will, the fact that any carport requires approval, no matter where it is, even if it's completely hidden. And the other one, I'm almost embarrassed to bring up because it's so marginal, but it is about two or three inches taller than it's supposed to be. So it is, it is above eighteen feet in height, but just barely.
And isn't that, Roy, just because of where it's, the finished grade is or the?
Yeah, and I'm not so sure why they use a different standard. Some of you guys that worked on that ordinance may know, you know, the height of the house is based on the high point of the lot. The high point of an accessory building is not. It's based on the ground right next to the accessory building, but that's the way the ordinance reads.
But we're only talking about, what, maybe two, three inches at most?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's, it's so marginal as to be silly, you know, particularly with the drop that's going on down that hill. You know, if I showed you, if, if I showed you one that was eighteen and one that wasn't in two different pictures, you wouldn't probably know which one was which.
Roy. Yes, sir. Richard?
As you mentioned, the ground continues to slope from the front of the proposed carport to the rear. How do you, how do you know what to use to calculate the height? Do you still have the advantage of calculating from the highest point of adjacent land?
Yeah, the ordinance doesn't say. I would guess that's a maximum. So the point, you would, you would look at every point in relation to, you know, what it is. So if, 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 if any part of it exceeds eighteen feet, then, then it requires approval. You follow me?
I do.
That doesn't mean I like the way the ordinance is written, but that's, my job is to not render an opinion, just, you know, figure out what it means.
Okay, I, the, the other question I have for you regards side setbacks.
Yes, sir.
They do apparently have a ten-foot or more side setback on the other side.
Oh, they do? Okay.
It seems so.
I, I would have been, I didn't have a survey or a set of permit drawings, and I couldn't tell where the property line was, really.
Well, having, having read your comments, I decided to try to figure that out.
Right.
And there are two bits of evidence. One is a power pole at the street, and the other is that at the back of the property, the backyard is fenced.
Right.
And the fence extends out from the side of the house at least ten feet before it turns toward the back of the property.
Right.
Which to me indicates that he's got at least a ten-foot setback on that side, so maybe he only needs five feet on the.
Correct.
On the driveway side. Isn't that correct?
If, if you're indeed correct, you're right, the, the degree of encroachment is less, but the encroachment exists.
The same, yeah. The, the lot on the other side of the house is vacant and there, there are no improvements there to go by, except, except his backyard fence is really the only guidance you have to try to figure out that setback on that side.
And if you think it's smart to rely on a fence builder, knowing where the property line is.
Well, there is.
Too much money on that.
Okay, okay.
If you've been to a board of adjustments meeting, you would know how bad that is. We got one now that's built in the right of way. They didn't even come close to the property line.
Are there any more questions of the staff from any of the commission members before we move on to the applicant's presentation?
I do have one other comment for Mr. Jambore. I wondered if you were aware that apparently the kit to build the carport is already on site.
I was not. I knew he was, I knew he was in a hurry, but that was just from an email comment that was super close.
I was surprised to see that when I walked down the hill.
All right, I see that Mr. Phillips is there. Mr. Phillips, would you like to make your presentation, please?
Sure. Thank you, guys, for having me on here. Yes, the carport is already purchased, kind of a cart before the horse situation. I guess we got a little antsy about getting it done. We made some improvements to our front yard, and this was just part of our overall plan of, you know, some improvements. I don't know if you, any of you guys that drove by and saw the rockwork and stuff that was done in the front yard, that grade, it sloped all the way down to the house, so we terraced it up to make it look nice there. And with that super steep driveway that we have, we added on that turnaround, basically out of the garage, so that it was a little bit useful, you know, because the driveway is not, is not parkable at all. It's at a, I don't know what degree angle that is, but it's got to be at the maximum legal, whatever the specifications are, I think it's, it's maxed out. My wife actually had to buy a different car after being there for about a year after, she was a little tired of sliding down the driveway, even in dry conditions. Anywho, the carport, where it sits, you guys that have saw the, the degree and slope of the yard is, is so severe that even the height of that, you know, the, the eve is even below street level by the time you get to where the top of that's going to be. So, you know, we get a lot of people stopped at the top of our driveway because it used to be, before they cleared a lot up the street, it was a great spot to see the lake from there. You could see the rock walls of Pacepin Park, which we have a nice view of that off the back of our house as well. So it doesn't block any of that. It's below tree line level in the. So it doesn't block any of that. It's below tree line level in the back and all that. It's, it'll be pretty insignificant as far as even noticing that it's there, but it would be certainly, we feel like, very significant for us as an improvement to the property and, you know, covered parking space as well as a, you know, just an outdoor space when needed, when weather calls for it.
For what it's worth, Mr. Chairman, and once again, I always hesitate to interpret an ordinance. I always like it when they have an intent section included. But I think the idea that a carport requires approval in Laguna Vista has to do more with the concern about that things other than cars will be under them. You know, other types of junk and storage and things like that that might be unsoldly. So I think that may be the most relevant thing. Anything that might be stored on the ground and when the car's not there, that probably has no chance of being seen from the street.
Thank you, Roy. Any of the commission members have questions for the applicant? Yes, Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Mr. Phillips, I guess you're going to pour additional concrete in order to provide footing for your new carport, is that correct?
Yes, there would be concrete footings that would have to go in just for the, you know, to lock the base into. Yes, sir.
Just, just small footings, not a continuous beam?
No, just a, just a round footing that drops in. It'll be dug in, and it'll sit flush with the ground, and it'll just be a cylindrical footing.
So can you estimate for us how far the roof line of your carport will be from your property line on that side?
It doesn't sit exactly parallel with the fence the way the spot was.
I understand. Let's go with that front corner?
Okay, the closest, the closest point, I think will be about three feet by the time the overhang, three to, the footing and the base is going to be at about, at the closest point, is going to be about seven feet away. And then you've got like, I guess, three feet to it. It'll be more like just under, just under five feet away from that fence by the time the overhang of the building.
Boy, on that front corner, I mean, there is the fence there, and I'm assuming that the fence is very, very close to the property line. It looked to me like you were already about three feet from the property line with the existing curb on the existing turnaround. And then you'll add a footing outside of that, and then your carport will have an overhang. And I would just like you to estimate for us the impact of the footing being outside that curb and then the carport having an overhang beyond the beams.
It's closer to, you know, it's closer to six feet or so from the curb to the fence. And so then when you put that footing there, you're adding about 18 inches of concrete in a circle, and that being flush with the ground there. And then so the overhang should, the drip line would still be, you know, a foot, I don't know, several feet on my side of the fence.
I have to say that my observation was that the front corner of the curb is closer than six feet to the fence, but we'll, we'll talk among ourselves later. Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant from any of the commission members? Let's, Larry?
Mr. Phillips, are you planning on putting any type of guttering system on that edge so that rainwater does not beat the ground by the time it falls that far?
That is currently a, it's already a natural wash, I guess, there. There's already, that's where my neighbor's yard actually flows into mine down there at the bottom. And then once you get into my backyard, there's a stone creek, kind of a dry creek bed that is made of stone that helps push that on, and it just runs on down to the lake.
Okay, I saw the stone bed you had. I thought it was very nice. I was, I guess I was just looking at where, when you put a 20-foot dropper more, just looking at what it's going to do to the ground right there and the fence.
Sure.
Wash anything away, other than that?
Well, there's those shrubs there, that Texas sage is all in that area. And so there's enough vegetation, we feel like, that helps hold that, hold that there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had not had plans of doing a gutter, to answer your question.
Any other commission members?
I have one other question for Mr. Phillips. Mr. Phillips, will the manufacturer of the building do the erection?
No, sir, it'll be an independent contractor that will do the erection of the building. They just provide the building. They give you a list of contractors that work with their company. It's a Mueller building, building, so it's, I think it's overbuilt. Once the kit showed up, it's, it's a lot more than, you know, your normal bolt-together little deal. It's very, very well put together, more so than I thought was maybe necessary when I saw it in person.
Well, you may be grateful for all of that construction material when the wind gets over 70 miles an hour.
It's, I think it's rated for 90, so.
But the, you're choosing from the list of contractors provided by Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Paul Prince, following on Mr. Brown's question, first earlier question, Mr. Phillips. So I guess, since you already have the concrete poured for your turnaround, do you have any opportunity to modify the design to move it further away from the property line? Are you pretty much locked into the concept you have, it's as far away from the line as you can get?
Yeah, with the parking turnaround already poured there, it's a, it's a five-foot drop from the back of that. I mean, it's, it's a, it's there, it's permanent structure. And so the only options I had was to try to tie to it itself or to put the footings a little bit wider than that. And I felt like that would be a sturdier construction method with a little bit wider base and to lock into some actual footings that were designed for that rather than try to bolt it on to the six-inch curb of the parking space.
Any other questions of the applicant? If not, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. We're going to open the public hearing at 7:53. And anyone care to comment, ask questions of the applicant? If not, then we'll close the public hearing at 7:54 and open it up for further discussion.
I think Roy mentioned something about there's a little bit, a little bit above the 18-foot height requirement. However, the conditional use permit, those, you know, certainly a height exception could be granted, and I don't see a couple inches being an issue to not approve or recommend approval of the permit. Other than that, I think it's, you know, at least to me, it's well out of view for most people, and especially the neighbor next door commented that he's all for it. So I guess I don't have any real issues with this project.
Thanks, Tom. And I guess, counselor, Ms. Silvera, if you would, should we put some mention of that increased height to allow an extra five inches, just to make sure there isn't a problem there?
It's certainly within your discretion to do that. You know, if you find that, that you think that's going to be an issue, I would certainly include that in motion if you're inclined to recommend approval.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that we do make mention of that since the footings have not been poured and the final elevation is not yet fully known. They know, they know what their target is, but the footings aren't there yet, so you can't actually measure the height.
Right. Roy, what would you think be adequate, six inches?
Anywhere under a foot, I don't think is going to make any difference.
Okay.
You could, you could cap it and just say, as submitted, but no higher than, you know, even 19 feet, I don't think will, will make that much difference down the slope and under the circumstances. But I think Mr. Brown is right. If you don't cap it, you know, it could grow quite a bit.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, would somebody like me to make a recommendation?
You were recommending to council on this one, right?
That is correct.
So for agenda item 20-1671-CEO-U at 21643 High Drive, I make a motion that planning and zoning recommend that city council approves the conditional use permit with a height cap at 19 feet, not to exceed 19 feet.
Ms. Silvera, is that close enough?
Yes.
Very good. All right, is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Okay, it was seconded by Larry Hagler. And all in favor, raise your right hand.
Eric and Gary, we didn't have any discussion on that before the vote. I was hoping.
All right. All right, so we have, we have seconded by Larry Hagler. And further discussion, Paul Prince?
Thank you. I would just suggest we may want to include, since this is a recommendation to council, it may be appropriate to explicit, and Mr. Jambore probably will convey this, but it may be appropriate to explicitly include our thinking in, and I believe our thinking is this, that we're recommending approval because it is largely non-visible from the street and because the neighbor whose side yard is most affected by the encroachment is in favor of the application being approved. I think those are two pretty important factors to pass along, so that's my comment.
And if, for some strange reason, Mr. Jambore is remiss, I'm sure Councilman Williams would be sure to remember and also make mention of that.
For the record, when these get to council, we add a whole nother section that is nothing but a summary of for and against and why.
Okay.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. The motion to recommend the city council passes. Any opposed? I don't see anyone opposed. All right, well, you get to go visit with the city council, Coach Phillips.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
And the next item on the agenda is design review application. I guess, I'm just, where it says no public hearing?
Yes, sir. That is correct. You can call one later if you think one's warranted, but.
I understand. I just wanted to be clear on that, that there would not be any public hearing.
Yeah, there's no doubt there any of that.
Item number 420-1666, along with three sixes, consideration of a design review approval in accordance with section 6.105 of chapter 14 of Laguna Vista Code of Ordinances for the proposed Trailhead Club and amenity center for residents within the hollows on Lake Travis, 7201 Quiet Place. And Roy, if you would honor us with your presentation?
Yes, sir. Actually, I wanted to commend, I don't know who did the design work. I remember talking to him on the phone once, but they did a nice job. There were a couple of three things that I wanted to call to the owner's attention that made me a little nervous, but they're really not part of your review. But I did make mention of them in your staff report. The one that made me the most nervous turned out to be a non-issue because there happened to be a little earth berm. But, you know, their zoning ordinance restricts all this to 15 feet in height. And fortunately, the high point of the lot was, there was this little earth berm that covered them. But if not for that, they might have been cutting a foot off this building or waiting to go in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission with an amendment to increase the height. So I recommended they take a look at that next time they have a zoning amendment, which will probably not be that far in the distant future. Couple of other things made me nervous, one of which I think they're going to change, which is rotate the dumpster 90 degrees. But with a low-volume parking lot, that really wasn't a concern. You know, it just wasn't the best. The fire pit was a little closer, not because of the way it'd be used normally, but I was a little concerned about vandals. You know, when I was a teenager, I'd have been in there setting a bonfire, and that might not have been a good idea. But all those, all those were brought to his attention, and they'll either change them by the time they apply for permits or not. But they don't really relate to your review.
Thank you, Roy. Any questions of the commission members to Roy at this point? Go ahead, Tom.
Roy, so, I mean, when I, when I first read your report, you were, you certainly came across as pretty impressed with the level of detail and everything they've addressed in what they want to do. And then some of these little things that you brought up, like the fire pit and dumpster and all that, seem minor. And, I mean, we're just, we're just kind of looking at it from an overall concept, design standpoint. And those little details that you brought up, like the fire pit and stuff, that's all stuff you can deal with when.
At the bill department, yes, sir. Yeah, it's that, I believe it's five criteria that are in your packet. You know, the most important of which is the privacy of the adjacent single family. And that, you know, that's one property owner with two lots, and there's a huge buffer there. That's a major issue. You know, safety of patrons and, you know, making sure, you know, your parking lot's not so poorly designed that, you know, people walking will get run over and can't get to the building safely. They did an extremely good job on that with the, you know, including the inclusion of the golf cart pass and all of it. It's well, all that's well thought out.
Okay.
But it, it's, it's that sheet of, of things you're supposed to look at. And that, those things I mentioned are not really in there. I just wanted to bring them to their attention in case they wanted to address them.
Okay. But my point is that the little things, some of those, these little things, you can address that separately as they, as they come up, right?
Right. If, if, if the fire marshal tags the fire pit, he's gonna have to move it.
Right.
But, and he will, he will review that shortly.
All right, thanks. You bet.
All right. Uh, no further, uh, questions of the staff? Uh, if we could have the applicant presentation?
Yes. Hi. Uh, can you hear me? The project manager for the hollows on Lake Travis? Can y'all hear me? Just making sure, because I'm calling in. Okay. Great. Um, okay, thanks. Um, the, uh, this is the, uh, second, uh, primary amenity center for the hollows community. This is over off of Destination Way, on the west side of the community. Uh, a, an amenity center in this general area has been planned for many years, and, uh, now that we are actively building out some of the subdivision sections off of Destination Way, uh, currently and over the next few years. So we know we need the second amenity here. These plans been reviewed and, uh, approved by the hollows, uh, Property Owners Association. They know that this would be part of the, uh, ultimate, uh, amenities for the community. Um, I, I appreciate, uh, Roy's, uh, comments and, uh, notes and then staff reports. Uh, we further discussed the, uh, fire pit, uh, ourselves and, and know that that might be an operational issue for the P O A, so we are planning to remove that. Uh, yes, as Roy commented, who knows, uh, get the kids or people up there to just don't take care of it properly or operate it properly might be an issue. And, uh, and duly noted on the lighting, uh, comments and the dark skies, and we'll make sure in the final, uh, construction drawings and, uh, M E P drawings that we've, uh, addressed the, uh, you know, the lighting criteria site. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you have.
Thank you. Uh, anyone like to, uh, make a, uh, comment or a question for, uh, I take it it's Mr. Long, Chair Long?
Yes, yes. Robert Long.
No?
Uh, I, I, I have a question, please. Uh, Mr. Long, uh, by the way, can you hear us okay?
Oh, yes. Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay. Um, could you, uh, kind of explain? I, I got lost on the description of how this site ended up being this site. Uh, and, and maybe that's not part of my determination here tonight, but I couldn't understand it. Uh, of, uh, how this site, which was not originally in the P D D, but is today?
Well, um, I don't really know all the, the long history on the hollows, uh, but it's my understanding this subdivision plat, uh, this section of the hollows is platted sometime back in two thousand eight or two thousand nine. Uh, and this site was a, I think it's a six acre, uh, little hilltop open space lot, uh, that was platted at the time. And, um, I, I don't know the details on the inclusion in the P D D or, or not, but I believe it is now.
I can address that, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like me to. And, and it was.
That was, uh, Mr. Brown with the question and not the chairman?
Well, I know, but I was gonna ask you permission to speak.
You, you go right ahead, Roy, unless Mr. Brown objects.
Yeah, uh, there was an amendment to the P D D, and you guys amended the amendment a couple of times in the last few years. What it does, uh, there, and that's part of the issue about the height. Uh, you can put an amenity center according to that P D D in any place designated, okay, for single-family homes. And, but the development standards are the same as single-family homes. And it is the plat that makes this apparent that it's an amenity site rather than a single-family home. So, you know, that, that's one of the things I called to their attention is being a really bad idea because of the height restriction. You know, this, if not for that little bitty berm that, you know, happened to be there fortuitously, they would've been cutting the size of this building down. And, and I think that's, that's what I was saying. Y'all really need to tell us where these amenity sites are and, and do it like a, a P D D ought to be.
Right.
And address that in your next amendment, in your next amendment. But, yeah, right. They could take, uh, four or five residential lots and say, hey, we're putting an amenity center here, we're gonna replat. And, and the, it would be fine with the zoning ordinance except for the, they gotta meet the same development standards that are a little squirrely and not really appropriate for an amenity center. So the answer is, yeah, it's in there, it's, but it's done poorly, and it ought to be fixed.
Thank you, Roy.
And we're, we're happy to clarify that and, uh, address that. Uh, we might need some future amendments to the P D D.
They're coming. We know they're coming. They'll, they'll be in front of you several little times, you know, for little things like this.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion on this, uh, item number four? If not, then, uh, regarding item number two zero dash one six six six, the Planning and Zoning Commission of Lago Vista approves the, uh, design in accordance with section six one, six point one oh five of chapter fourteen of Lago Vista Code of Ordinances for a proposed Trailhead Club and an amenity center for the residents within the hollows Lake Travis, seven two zero one Quiet Brook Place. Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by, uh, Tom Monahan. Any, uh, discussion? No further discussion? All in favor, uh, raise your right hand? Uh, the motion carries unanimously? Uh, thank you, Mr. Long.
Thank you.
All right. Regarding, uh, item number five, consideration of a recommendation regarding a potential amendment to section two point one eight, four point one one and four point one one two of chapter ten and section one zero point five, point one oh five of chapter ten, point five of Lago Vista Code of Ordinances to accommodate supplemental and amended drainage and erosion control requirement applicable to all property within the city. And, uh, Roy, if you would, uh, please take us through that?
Yes, sir. Uh, and I, I think we got at least two members of the subcommittee that worked on the erosion control ordinance for forever. And it's been removed from chapter fourteen and ready to be adopted in, uh, chapter three, only, and originally we thought all we had was some cross-references in chapter ten and ten point five. And then we found something that had been removed when you guys redid the subdivision regs a few years ago. There was a, an essential element that was missing, so we had to put it back. And that dictated, in order to put it back, we needed to call a public hearing and get a recommendation to you guys before the council can act on it. So technically, what's in front of you are just those changes to chapter ten and ten point five. The chapter three stuff is just an F Y I, so you'll know why you're changing ten and ten point five.
Correct. Any, uh, questions of, uh, the staff?
Roy, just as a nitpicking thing here.
Yes, sir.
Two point one eight, paragraph D three. Um, would read better if it said it's Texas Licensed Professional Engineer, P E.
Yeah. That's, that's Eric's Albanian accent coming to the forefront again. I'm afraid. I tried to catch all of that, but it was hard. Uh, and that's all I did on that ordinance was try and catch all that. But, uh, you're right. I, I will, I will fix that before I send it to the council. I think that is an improvement.
Okay.
Every time I read it, I found another little thing that wasn't quite the way I'm used to seeing it.
Yeah. So chapter three's ready for the council? The building commission's already approved it, or the?
Oh, yeah. They, they've been through both sections on different occasions and.
Okay, all right.
The only thing that, the only thing that's holding this up, it, or the ten point five, and because of the bonding thing, the, the bonding provisions got taken out of the old subdivision regs, and that kind of crossed the line of being substantive. So we said we'd better bring this and do it right and be, be safe rather than sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm trying to read through that whole thing today. Yeah, I've seen it, I think, the erosion control part before, because when we took it out of fourteen, we showed you what was it gonna replace it.
Yeah.
But Mr. Prince, I know, was, he was pretty active in doing internet research along with me, trying to figure out how you deal with severe slopes. So I know he was active on that part.
Uh, Mr. Brown, you were signaling there?
I was. Thank you. I, I have a few questions for Roy. On, uh, the, on chapter ten, uh, in, in the D three, uh, under two point one eight, uh, the final plat, D three, uh, where you amended, uh, the requirement for the, uh, surety bond. Uh, should we have a deadline? Or is a hundred and twenty-five percent enough incentive to be sure that it'll be finished in a timely manner?
Yeah, we, well, if not, I mean, we won't issue, uh, we won't issue any building permits, and the people that bought the, the lots, which are typically builders, you know, the reason they try and expedite this is so they can sell lots to builders and they can start making their preparations so that as soon as the infrastructure is complete, they can get building permits and start building. So those are the guys that are really gonna hammer them.
So they'll be incentivized by, by the desire to make money, huh?
That, well, and, and if they provide a real surety rather than a cash bond, uh, they're paying a premium on that. And it's, it's of consequence. And that's, the builders are, the builders are nagging them. Uh, the, the person that counts the, the, the beans is gonna nag them. All that will happen if they start dragging their feet. Let me put it this way, it's, the real problem is going fast enough to make these guys happy. We're, we're facing that right now at Tassera at the next phase. They got people wanting to buy lots that they don't have.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's a good problem to have.
It is, but then they pressure us to hurry.
I have a couple of other questions in, uh,
I'm sorry. Well, I, I just, I had a follow-on comment to your first question, which, uh, if, uh, if you don't mind.
Go right ahead, uh, Paul.
I think what, what Richard may be getting at with that comment about a timeline, Roy, is there are some instances of, of homes where, you know, foundations are poured or start of construction happens and then it just stops. Um, but I don't know that we're trying to solve, that, that is a problem for the city.
Yeah, no, but those are, those are building, those are building permits. This, what this is talking about is the streets and utilities that are put in by the developer before the builders can build.
Yeah, the subdivision plat.
I think, this is the construction plans. What they're trying to do is, is, uh, typically, you can't approve the final plat until after all that's finished. And what they're saying is, and, and it's very normal provision, it just somehow got left out of the two thousand sixteen, seventeen modifications you guys did, uh, to say, no, there's an alternative to that. If you bond it at an additional twenty-five percent of its cost, uh, we'll take that surety bond, because if you walk away, then the city will finish it. And that's what that bond is for.
Okay.
And then, and on top of that, and this is not in there, but this isn't an issue as regards to this, there's also a, the two-year maintenance bond required. You know, ma- make sure the streets are built right. But if, if we gotta fix them in two years, we gotta bond for that, too. And same thing for the utilities and erosion control, the whole bit. But that, that part didn't get left out. That was still in there. The maintenance bond was.
Thank you for that interruption.
You bet.
Are we back, are we back to Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Um, Roy, skipping down to the section on drainage, uh, three point one four oh one.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when you get into, uh, a common plan of development.
Right.
Uh, if, uh, you've got a, a, a little commercial strip of some kind, and one guy has built his building and, um, he would like to get his C O, um, but he can't effectively do just his part of a common plan of development. Is, is there a, a workaround for him?
Yeah, actually, and, and, and when it's commercial or multifamily, they are independently covered by the Highland Lakes Watershed Ordinance and the drainage requirements. What this provision is about, and it mimics L C R A's language, is the reason that, that term is the way it is. What that is saying is, is you can't chop up a subdivision, okay, into little tiny single lots in order to get around the, the Highland Lakes Watershed ordinance. So it really only applies to duplexes and single-family. What it's saying is, you can't make a bunch of phases in that to avoid the, the, the regulations as they're written. And that, that's the workaround that they're trying to plug that hole. That's what that term refers to.
Okay, well, that, that sort of brings me to my.
Right, because it, that, there is no exception for multifamily or commercial, is what I'm saying. They have to comply, and there is no exception.
And, and, and so a common plan of development for them must be completed fully.
You're right. The term has no meaning except for single and multifamily, or single and two-family.
R one, R two. Okay.
Yep.
Well, uh, so is that the only time R one and R two are, uh, affected by this, uh, ordinance, except when they are in some kind of a, what is described as a low-lying area or something like?
Well, no, any, any subdivision, anytime you're replating, and I'll give you an example. Remember, and it's probably gonna come up again, remember the eighteen lots on Boggy Ford?
Very well.
Okay. He couldn't, he couldn't turn that, he couldn't do several two-lot subdivisions till he reached eighteen in order to get around the Highland Lakes Watershed Ordinance.
That wouldn't have been a trip.
That's what that means. You follow me?
Yes. Okay.
He's got to comply because it's a subdivision. Got to have construction plans, gotta comply with the Highland Lakes Watershed Ordinance.
Okay, I.
And no number of phases will change that.
Okay. Okay, I've got one other question. You use a term that I'm not familiar with and it's, uh, way down under, um, three I. Um.
Three, uh.
Yeah.
Under water quality requirements?
No, just above that.
Okay.
Uh. That, that I.
Yeah.
The last, the last sentence, pursuant to such approval, the property owner shall dedicate a drainage easement to accommodate a five-hundred-year level storm and include within that easement a maintenance strip as a drainageway access. Would you please tell me what a maintenance strip is?
Uh, uh, an area where he can go in and take care of it, the city could, or anybody.
Where, where the city would have essentially, uh, an, an easement access.
To go maintain that.
So that they can get equipment into, uh, okay.
Yep, and, and, and once again, that's Eric's provision, but I, I'm just lucky I know that one.
Well, we're, we're so fortunate that, uh, you were available for that then.
Well, I had to edit it for him, cause it was pretty rough the first time I got it.
Um, I guess I do have one other. I do, I guess I do have one other question.
Well, you, you asked for, you asked for three, this is gonna be four.
Um, I'm sorry. I, I should have numbered my notes.
What you always do is you should ask for five and only give four, and then you ask what's five? And you just tell us that you always have one in reserve.
Hmm.
It, it works.
I'll certainly keep that in mind, Mr. Chairman. It's, that shows me why you are the chairman and I am not. Because you have a much clearer understanding of such, uh, ways of conducting commission business than I.
Thank you very much for the recognition, Richard.
Um. Under. I've got three A, uh, but it's under somewhere else. Oh. Uh, this is under applicability and exemptions.
So we're still on drainage, right?
Yes, we are, but this is, uh, B, applicability and exemptions. Uh, sub-chapter three, sub-something A. Construction permits, applicant, permit applications submitted within six months of the effective date of this ordinance. Uh, where did that six months come from and, uh, why should we do that? Why, why can't it become effective essentially immediately?
That was Eric's preference and it, that was his workaround to give people time to, to know that it's coming. Uh, I don't, I did not necessarily agree with him. You know, the, the way I'm used to, and Aaron and I have talked about this, you know, typically what you do is you build in a minor delay in the effective date of the ordinance for things that affect contractors who may have permits coming up, whatever, you know, so that it doesn't totally blow their budgets or, or blindside them.
Uh-huh, I understand that.
Eric stuck this in the ordinance because our habit is to make ordinances effective immediately. I, I would have, I would have simply gone the other way and said, would you please build in a two-week delay? I've never heard of six months, that's, that's beyond anything I've ever done.
It seemed extremely generous to me. It certainly gives anybody who wants to avoid this ordinance plenty of time to plan.
The, Aaron and I debated with Eric on this whole section forever. You, you ought to have seen this two months ago if not for those debates. It, it was, it was pretty rough.
Okay.
There were lot parts we didn't agree with in here, but.
Should, should we or could we recommend something different, Richard? Like a one month instead of a six month and just to just?
I can make your comments, they won't be official recommendation, cause this is chapter three that's not really in front of you. But I, I, I can certainly add it to the staff report so that the council is aware of your, I'll call unofficial comment, how's that?
Well, it's an official comment, but I'm not officially authorized to speak on the matter.
Well, you, you are, you are not asked to make a recommendation about that. That doesn't stop you from doing it, uh, ex officio, let's say.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Chairman, th- those are four of my five questions. I'll reserve the right for my fifth question, should it arise? Thank you.
Okay, you take the fifth, I'll drink the fifth. We have to have a, a little bit of levity. Uh, so if we could, uh, that concludes, I guess, the staff presentation. I'd like to go ahead and open the, uh, public hearing at, uh, eight thirty. And, uh, are there any, uh, public comments? I see that, uh, Mr. Roberts has his hand up there. Yes, sir.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm gonna ask four questions. And, um, I had the first one is, would this ordinance change, um, if it happens, let's say, two city council meetings from now, as is customary, um, would it affect any? Is it, does it, is there any retroactive aspect to this? Or is it only things that are approved after the council approves the change?
That's, uh, that sounds like an Aaron question to me, but I'll, I'll.
For more context, I, I guess, allow me, um, would this affect, could this potentially affect nature's point? Or the last agenda item, the applicant for, uh, for the hollows? Would this have any impact on them if they had not planned for this?
The answer is, is, is nature's point doesn't have even an application and is not even annexed yet, so it will most definitely apply to them. Uh, it won't apply retroactively to the hollows, but even if it did, I'm not aware of anything that they're not already complying with. Uh, these are plugging some holes that are typically, uh, I, I'll give you an example of the one we were worried about. Uh, there's a break shop or a muffler, you know, right, uh, behind municipal way, uh, that has absolutely no stormwater detention whatsoever and is dumping severe water. And there were enough holes in our existing ordinance where that gentleman, for whatever reason, wasn't required to do actual stormwater detention. And what we did, some of this is a little redundant and maybe a little overkill. But if there were something that looked like a hole, we plugged it. And we said, you know, multifamily, you know, commercial, you are gonna take care of your stormwater. There are no exceptions.
Roy, if I may, uh, just expound upon that and ask, uh, a follow-up question, uh, Mr. Chairman. Is, would, would any of these, the considerations, an applicant for a zoning change? Would any thing in this chapter of our city ordinance have to be considered at the begin, uh, during a zoning change? Or is it, as I presume, only to be considered during the plating approval phase?
Well, not even always the plating approval phase, sometimes during the site development, uh, phase only. Uh, not all of it applies to subdivision regs, only some do. And that's where the cross-references are. But the, I can't imagine, other than somebody doing something in the zoning stage where it was very clear, you, you had a, a, a stormwater issue that couldn't be solved. And we would consider that with or without this ordinance.
Okay.
So the answer is, you know, that, there's limited latitude, but this is, this didn't change that really. You know, it may have, may have made it a little more clear in some instances that you, there weren't a workarounds, but you know, like I said, if we had something that was impractical, uh, we would catch it at the concept stage, the zoning stage somewhere and just say, hey, you, you've got a, you've got a reserve room for stormwater here and you haven't done it.
Is, Roy, is that something in our, in the, the current criteria as set forth in a zoning application? Where it specifies all of the, all of the, the criteria that has to be met unless waived by the city manager or his appointee? Is there, do you see a need for adding anything that might address storm drainage and, and water erosion as a part of?
I absolutely do, and, and I think that might be in one of the criteria that we mentioned ought to be added and, and worked on by the subcommittee. Uh, it was in the comprehensive plan, uh, some informal update a few years ago, it got removed. And that was our recommendation was to, you know, that's where it belongs, is that kind of detail. Well, you know, for every zoning application, you know, to think about things like that. And that, that's why that was brought to your attention is something we need to work on. Cause the future land use map is just not good enough. And they, and, and the ordinance is too vague.
Thank you very much for the time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Roy.
Uh, Mr. Roberts, that was only two.
I took your advice that you gave to Mr. Brown.
Very good, very good.
I learned quickly, sir, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Roberts. All right, uh, we were, uh, that was our, uh, public hearing, no further, uh, comments. And we opened the, uh, public hearing at, uh, eight thirty, we're gonna close it at eight thirty-six. Would, uh, someone like, uh, for me to make a, uh, recommendation? Looks that way. Well, thank you, thank you. Regarding, uh, let me make sure I have that in front of me. Regarding, uh, item number, hmm, I don't see the, item number five of the Planning Zoning Commission of, uh, September tenth to, uh, recommend to the city council of Lago Vista a potential amendment to section two point one, two point one eight, four point one one and four point one one two of chapter ten and section ten point five, point one oh five of chapter ten point five of the Lago Vista Code of Ordinances to accommodate supplemental and amended drainage and erosion control requirements applicable to all property regulated by the city. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
It's moved and seconded, do we have, uh, further discussion on item number five?
I'm just there that we tag, uh, two point one eight, that they correct the, uh, correct the, uh, language for the engineer to specify professional engineer.
Clear enough? Acceptable, counselor?
Yep.
You would have thought a professional engineer would have thought of that on his own, but what the heck?
Took his lessons.
Well, not everybody's a Casey Jones. So. If, uh, if we would, uh, all in, uh, no further discussion, all in favor, uh, raise your right hand. I don't see any opposed, message passes, uh, recommendation passed to the city council unanimously. And now we're probably the highlight of our, uh, agenda. Uh, comments from our, uh, council liaison, Mr. David Williams?
Uh, I reserve my comments for the next discussion item that you have on your agenda.
All right, all right. So the, uh, next item, number seven, is discussion regarding potential changes to the staff land use report summary.
For what it's worth, I mean, I considered what you got this month is just a trial. You know, see whether you like it and then you would, then tell me if you liked it, uh, if you liked it, it's set for this and whatever changes you wanna make. You know, this is, it's not real hard. This format or, or template, if you will, is much more flexible than the one we have. Pretty easy to change.
And I liked it myself, I thought it was, uh, pretty organized, I liked having the bullet points and, uh, it seemed like easier to get through and, uh, understand what, uh, the issues is and what you're thinking. Using that format.
Yeah, I, I second that, as I kinda said earlier, that I, I found this, uh, very helpful. You, you made more comments and I, I always like more comments and color commentary is welcome and I, I actually don't like to have to try to guess as to whether Roy is generally in favor of the application or generally opposed, uh, the more explicit I can figure out his thinking. You know, and I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm always willing to consider the arguments and disagree with it, but I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna sort of be missing the subtleties, uh, so the more, the more the better from my perspective, so I think it's, it's good.
And I'll even add this comment, you know, when you get down to the alternate recommendations or alternate decisions, I wouldn't say it's, uh, I wouldn't say it's, it's what the staff is thinking. But there, the order of those is based on the ones that we think are more easily legally justifiable. You know, and, and the idea is, if we gotta go to court, uh, we put these in the order that we think increase our chance of winning a lawsuit. That's the way I put it. Uh. I'm not so sure whether that's relevant, but that's, that is the method to the madness, so to speak. It won't, it won't show up, that, that will always be the order.
Yes, David.
One of the things that I stressed to Roy and, uh, on the staff reports was I wanted a little bit more detail on our staff reports that came to us. I felt that it was important not to just see P and Z approve the motion six to one or five to one or five zero. But I wanted to know what your discussion items were so that we'd have a better understanding of what you discussed in your meeting, so we could follow that same process. And, uh, so that's why you're seeing a little bit more staff, uh, summary coming your way, uh, cause ours are, are a little bit more detailed now as far as understanding, well, did you discuss uh, additional drainage issues on a particular subject? Or did you discuss how close to the curb on a particular, uh, item? So now, now we see all the details of what you discussed, even if you didn't bring it up as being important after your discussion, I, I, we now get to see that and I thought that was important.
Thank you, David. Uh, yes, Paul?
Uh, I'm seeing a couple of things on the chat over here, which I think should be clarified. So there's a little confusion, like from, from some of the citizens on what we're talking about, I think. So to clarify that, we're talking about really the notes that Roy puts in front of every agenda item. So if you look, for example, on page six of this packet, uh, that is the staff land use report. It is basically in, he, him passing along the information to us about the discussion we're about to have. So we're, we're, we're really kind of giving feedback on, is that more verbose and detailed, uh, land use report from the city staff of use to us? And we're saying, yes, that's good stuff.
Right, and for what it's worth, I mean, uh, the council is almost entirely different. Uh, there, there's other staff members, I mean, I would, the first day I got here, I was told what you guys wanted by somebody that, you know, isn't here anymore. And, uh, I had no reason to argue with him, I just did it. But when somebody said, we want more information, uh, I didn't get a lot of detail and I said, well, here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna pull out the ones I was doing for, I came to Lago Vista and that's what you're looking at. You know, you're looking at my format from, from a couple of other cities. I will not name names. And they, these are much more time-consuming, by the way, than the old ones.
No doubt.
Is that something from C C L A, uh, Roy?
T C L A, I know what the L A is for, what's the T C for? I know what the LA is for. What's the TC for?
CC. Did you want me to tell them, Roy?
No, it's, well, it's up to you.
Oh, okay.
I actually used it, and, and I didn't invent it, okay? I inherited from a guy that, that practiced 30 years ago, and I, all I did was tweak it a little bit, you know, modernized it. But, yeah, it's easier because you don't have to spend time, you know, squeezing it into limited space that you can't format, and then you find out, okay, well, how do I, you know, the old ones, believe it or not, I had to redo them three or four times to make them work because of the lack of space. They were intended, you know, that format was intended not to say much. And of course, that didn't work out for me, you know, but this, I, I just, I start writing and, you know, uh, if it's, if it's a complicated case, it's, it's long, and if it's not, it's short. No big deal.
All right, any, uh, any further discussion? If not, uh, since, uh, in the consent agenda, uh, I take it, Roy, that Alice will have the minutes next time around. She's been pretty busy. Uh, my packet did not have the minutes. Is there minutes?
I, I forgot it was muted. We don't, and it's because the permitting side has gone crazy.
I understand, I understand.
She just, it, I have no explanation of why. If there's a bad economy, somebody needs a clue in our locals to quit spending money on stuff that requires a permit.
Understood. Well, we'll, we'll take care of that at, uh, our next, uh, uh, commission meeting.
Yes, sir. She felt bad, I can tell you that.
If there are people in Tassara who are trying to buy lots that haven't even been platted yet, that the economy is doing better than advertised.
If, uh, we could, I know, uh, Mr. Brown, you had a future agenda item you, uh, wanted to, uh, possibly add or discuss? You wanted to be on TV or YouTube? You wanted, uh? No?
I don't think that was Richard that asked for that.
Um, yeah, it was Gary, uh, Larry. I, Gary. I've forgotten what it was.
It had to do, it had to do with, uh, Mr. Roberts had, uh, made a comment about the YouTube. And, uh, you were, and I, and I said possibly, uh, you might want to save that for a future agenda item to make some, uh, recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. Zaleski.
You're more than worth a commissioner, bro.
Further proof why you are the chairman and I am not. Mr. Chairman.
Mine like a steel trap.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking. Uh, Mr. Roberts mentioned that the Zoomed council meetings are transcribed or transferred to YouTube, but not, not put there live. But, um, I, I, it would seem to me that we ought to at least talk about that in a future meeting, get the, uh, advice of, uh, maybe Mr. Williams who has some experience with it, Mr. Jambore obviously does, and Ms. Salvera will be the final arbiter of that, uh, and can actually tell us what we ought to do. But, uh, in response to Mr. Roberts' request, I think we ought to at least talk about it in a future meeting if we can get it onto our agenda.
Yeah, and, and there may be some IT cost involved in terms of personnel and things like that to.
We can pass those along.
Yeah, we can solicit the, the information so that you have.
I thought we could just pass those costs along to Mr. Roberts because he requested it.
Good idea.
That, he's smiling and nodding, so I think that's a still.
I'll do it.
We can put that into the, uh, we can put that into the request.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Uh, any other, uh, future agenda items that, uh, the commissioners would like to discuss? Did you, did you have your hand up there, Mr. Roberts?
Um, no, sir, but, um, I wouldn't. No, sir, I don't have anything to add, but thank you for asking.
Well, you had those two in reserve, so I just didn't want to forget you.
I was, I paused as I was thinking about Roy's comments, um, regarding the, the application for, for, uh, zoning applications and maybe clarifications needed to that at some point in the future. Uh, if, if, if and when a subcommittee meets on, uh, chapter, on possible, uh, language regarding chapter 14. But I don't think that there is an agenda item. That's just something that can be discussed at later time.
Thank you. Um, if there's, uh, nothing else, one last chance. I don't see anybody waving their hands around. Our, uh, meeting is adjourned at, uh, 8:52.
Very good. Thank you.
Everybody have a good evening.
You too.
Bye.
My son is asking, which one is Roy?
Roy?
Yeah, my, my son is off-camera listening, and a few minutes ago, he's like, who's that, who's, who's the fellow talking with the Texan accent?
That's not a Texan accent. That's an accent that comes from CCLA.
Okay.
Well, since he's, since he's not there to defend himself, CCLA is known as the Cow College of Lower Alabama.
Is that right? Okay, I had never heard that before.
Otherwise known as, uh, Auburn University.
Okay, all right, very good. Well, tell, tell Roy, next time you talk to him, he, he's got a fan in my son over here. He likes his accent.
Well, good. I do too.
Y'all have a good night.
Night.
Bye-bye.